Are we all ready? Open meeting. Sign of prayer. Amen?
Let's lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this final budget meeting to order at 4:01 on May, March 25th, 2015. Alright.
Okay, sir. You've called the last changes and everything?
I had, I had looked them over.
But I guess just all it's left is approving.
No, we approved the entire budget?
Yes.
We don't have to approve each one individual?
Now, once you approve this, these, all these numbers went into that.
Okay. Alright. Do we have a motion to approve the budget as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget at the same.
And we have a motion to approve the budget as presented, all in favor, signal five as saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries.
This is just the page where you need to sign to show who can do budget provisions. Okay, okay, that's not approval, it's all three of you can sign that. Now, these are individual budgets that you need to sign and if you don't agree with, or once you don't agree with Ralph, you just don't sign them. And there's some extra pages there in the front, it's full of provisions you might have to send it to other places. They need that page signed too. That's the same thing as the other, pay budget provisions.
This here?
Yeah, it's part of the main body, not send it to other, like the insurance and stuff that I can have.
Okay, where do we sign?
Uh, down there.
Right in front of our name?
Yeah, just right in front of your space. That tells me I'll reduce office, who can sign budget provisions to us. And you can just go ahead and just put your notes there, but I need more later on. This one, you can sign that one. That one, okay, that, any one and then that one. Just go, don't worry about those.
Just, just to talk?
If I need those later, I'll just sign. I'm gonna need that many. That's one of the budgets you guys would have to stick.
You guys signed this here, here, here?
Yeah, we've got all of this stacked on there, you have to sign all of it. Great, if there's two stickers, that means you also have to, you have to sign twice. One at the top where it says President and the Commission, because it's one of your budgets. And the Commission is a budget, so you have to sign it to your, this is yours. The topic, as you wish, budget provisions. Ask the Gany Christian's budget for.
Maybe I'll give you a question.
What? Yeah, that way you know which one you're signing.
And your Ralph must sign that in there.
I do. That's all the time it's missing.
Yes, wait, that's the signature. The signature.
No, I've signed it, you need to sign that.
You need to sign this one, it's time to.
Yeah. Will you put the dates in?
Yeah.
There doesn't, there will be a signature. I wouldn't, there is.
I may be if you don't get it for a flat now. We've contacted six places and we have contacted their votes. We just find. Contacted six places, you got one back? One, one back, they sent two different ones back. We've shown four people this week, so maybe by Friday or first next week, we should have the majority go back in. Can we just say with somewhat local West Virginia companies, from Parker Bird to Trendon, kind of retarded.
Go back through it, Ralph, you don't sign that page.
Yep. We almost signed that. Yeah, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to increase that budget about fifty times so we can have a election every year. Can you just see the Attorney's Office?
You have all the official, the thing that you're signing so far.
Yeah. All they do is all the, they don't even come back.
Give them out.
Who signed it, okay? Who were the ones who knew?
I got one right here.
And I have to say, oh.
You're busy signing right now.
I got one door, door, I did got.
Is this everything then? Do you have a question?
I've got some questions about the budget. I figured that's going to be one in the.
Sure, I'm sure that is.
Okay, um, for this past year, budget total was what? The one that you just.
For the one we, they just signed?
No, the one that you just, we're finishing up the year.
We're finishing up, um, end of the year total?
Mm-hmm.
Because it changes.
Do you have anything that just shows differences?
Yeah, the budget, it has last year and this year.
Can I just have a copy of it? Say we can answer a bunch of questions. Um, how much will it allow for donations this year?
We put in the budget about three hundred.
They got it though? Uh, how much will be going into rainy day fund?
There is none in this next budget, is there?
Are there going to be new coins?
Well, other than the administrative assistant.
Well, that's, that's.
There, there is, um, we're going to, probably in June, we will be transposing that into the rainy day budget. I mean rainy day fund, not for fiscal 2015, 2016.
Like the leftovers?
2014, 2015.
Okay, uh, do you project the taxes to hold up, not to get it? Any pro, uh, projects that you budget for?
We have budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, to set aside in a fund for the, is it IRP towers?
The new towers are.
The new towers that, that Paul Bump came down and talked to us about. We have put a budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand for future payment against the library. We have budgeted in the neighborhood of, is it seven thirty or seven eighty?
Seven eighty I think it was.
It was either seven hundred and thirty or seven hundred and eighty for paving and sidewalks around the courtes. Seven eighteen, okay.
And seven fifty, sure.
Alright, and courthouse renovations, uh, five hundred thousand.
Uh, how much is budgeted for the DCAA?
Seven thirty something.
And with all the oil and gas taking place, and this would be two years back, why do we have to increase? Why should there be an increase in our taxes?
Because, are you talking about the revenue?
Well, I asked if, if the taxes would be going down, and you said yes.
You mean the personal taxes?
Yeah.
No, the rate went down.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
The rate went down. Uh, the rate went from fourteen to thirteen point seven five.
And we're not going to be hit with this new assessment decision, are we?
Yeah, you'd have to talk to the assessor about that.
Because that kind of wiped out everything that our taxes.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know.
But you're going to see an increase in the income from the taxes.
Yes.
But why did you vote no?
Oh, we didn't do it.
Yeah, still okay.
We know the answer, but.
Okay. That's it.
Okay.
I'll probably come later to the show, but we did put a, we have this kind of funding request in and, you know, I was just gonna come a while back, we had a warranty, it seems like my job and everything gets in the way sometimes, but I just wanted to let you know what we're looking at with our funding request, how it's been done, so keep individualized. We, we have one, one, one company sent two bids. And one was in the little fifties and that covered on the sheet, everything on this side of town, you know, going out to the post office and, you know, church and county street, and then the eighty-eight thousand covered what we need to do, including this side, what we need to do on block house also. You know, is eighty, with eighty thousand, banks and everything we paid and. Everything on the main part block house except for that rural street, that, that grant, I think, that's sitting out there, but we have some money set aside that we got from, from our oil company that worked up here in this and dammers of roads, and we're committing twenty-five thousand this year to, to paving, and that's going to be before the end of this fiscal year, and that fiscal year we're going to commit more of it. We're tired of just doing hot holes, it's a necessary evil, but we want to, you know, start paving and, and get stuff back in shape, it's been, it's been years since the street's been paved, you know, you know, so.
So if I'm, if I'm understanding, Cottage Street is the one up to the, okay, I see it, the post office. And then Columbia Street down towards the old depot?
Yeah, like if you were driving down, goes the bank drive through all that, and it's a high traffic, a lot of use, it's pretty, pretty rough.
And between there and, or between Main Street? No. Okay, I see.
We kind of, on.
I got you.
Church and Columbia, we kind of left off the hills going from Main Street, kind of started the next blocks out.
Right, and Church Street from right out here to.
The next two blocks.
Right.
Is what we, what we look at.
And then, this is, this is over in. Oh, in Block House, in Block House.
And it also covers a little street, um, Lincoln, um, if you're going out of town on eighteen, you know, you turn way to the, like High Street, the other left right there coming up back behind the old grade school, that building there is a little washed out and bad, so we want to look at doing that, we might have to pick and choose based on how much money we have to spend, well, if we can do it, we can't do it.
And did you say you had bids on all of this?
Yeah, all that, the bid, and I didn't get copies for, for everything that I've submitted was eighty-eight thousand, two thirteen.
And like a, I'm like a pick-up word, though.
We have twenty-five thousand that we're going to stay with, you know, so. I think we requested fifty, so we just kind of, you know, we'll have to pick and choose a little bit, so.
Okay, um. And like I had, like I had told you, I had mentioned to Herc about, about Main Street and the possibility of a partnership.
Right.
With the state, so he's, he's checking that out.
Right.
And, so that would.
And only one thing, with our twenty-five thousand, fifteen thousand has to be spent on block house, because it was very much.
That were part of Keyhole, huh, the?
Yeah, Keyhole gave us some, I think at the time they gave us five, when we put ten with it, and now we have no ten, so fifteen is a half.
Has to go up early.
Half go up there, and those people, they, I mean, at times.
A partner, yeah.
So we tried patching, it was on a hill, it washes out, and, you know, so.
Well, if it's, if it was donated with provision that we spent there. But that, but that includes this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, you have anything? Anything else?
Well, I just wanted to give you the information.
Okay.
And I'm assuming our side, you know, have to wait till I can get the, the sure on.
Yeah, over, well, actually, you know, I'm just, I'm going to try and convince it down to sign it for us.
Okay.
Alright, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Is there anything, anything else that we need to take care of? You, you can get this in?
I'm going to email to Brenda Deckel.
Okay. If there's any problems or, or you need anything else, just, you know, work, you have to get ahold of us.
And you want the whole thing, or you just want certain parts of it? Twenty-six.
No, I've got, I can compare the one that I have up in the house.
Yeah, I think it's like twenty-six stages.
Why don't you let me review it like tomorrow afternoon?
Alright, that's fine.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I should move.
Meeting is adjourned at four twenty-six. Pardon?
I circled like five, six minutes, and well, yeah, this circle, immediately, I have.
Well, I think, I mean, I looked at them all, and I think what we need to do is each of us need to spend a little time, think about it, and then I, I think probably, I mean, and this is personal, I don't really have the time right now to, to spend on it, I think latter, you know, sometime in April, after the fifteenth, we can get together, so I think we've got, you know, a couple, three weeks to look at them, and read through them a couple, three times, and, and make your choices, and then we'll decide on who all we want in. Does that sound reasonable?
I want to do them all.
I do too.
I do too.
I picked out like five, now.
I circled.
Now the eighteen.
You're stealing, you're going to sit in the cabin.
There's a lot of good ones in there.
Yes, there is, there is. Especially one you're flying airplane, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's going to be, I mean, the interview will probably narrow down some. I'd say we're going to have a bit of a time. There's a lot of really good ones. And we want the best we can get.
Well, I, I got a question.
Okay.
Well, if you live so far away, why do you want to come down here to this place?
People, people move all the time. And, you know, that's going to be one of the, that's going to be one of the requirements is that they live fairly close. And, you know, that's gonna be one of the, that's gonna be one of the requirements, is that they live fairly close, live fairly close. I mean, well, I don't know that that would be a requirement, I suppose if somebody lived in Harpers Ferry and wanted to, uh, and wanted to commute, uh, of course, part of it might be that, that we put in the, in the ad that they could work from home part of the time, so, you know, we'll just have to wait and see. Like I say, that would be part of the interview process.